Council's beck and call, is that a recess at present time? Do you want to say this again?
Aye.
Right, aye sir. All right, the first item on tonight's agenda is the school committee and the school department's plan for the use of their fund balance. And I understand that there are some recent developments with the stage two application that maybe Mr. Bassett can bring everybody to speed on?
There are. Stage two has been placed on hold for the Fast Track. So, to be clear to everyone, it does not mean the bond project is on hold, it means stage two is on hold. So, RIDE has two separate, two separate programs now, they have a major and they have a Fast Track. Major is anything that, for example, the all encompassing bond that we're trying to do, decommission Hallowell, move students, and possibly do those upgrades to things like the locker rooms, the science labs, and what have you. We tried to keep Fast Track open. We were told by RIDE at our last meeting, which was February 22nd, I believe, that you have to have 100% design schematics for stage two. I haven't received clarification from that since that meeting, but that effectively, we don't have 100% design schematics for stage two because I don't know why anybody would go that far and spend that kind of money to get those kind of schematics for a proposal stage. So, we are going to go back and question it, but for now, that means the Fast Track program for this year is dead. We can reignite the process next September if we wish to. We'll have to see where we are at that point. By that point, I hope we'll have the educational study completed, and the educational study is really what we need to pull the red major bond, the major project together.
Could you describe too what he said about spending any funds until it's been part of the stage two application process?
So, so RIDE has a couple of ways that they approve if you want reimbursement. Of course, there's always on the table, if you don't want reimbursement, you can, you know, within reason, do just about any project you wish. If you want that reimbursement from RIDE, you have to run all the projects through some kind of RIDE approved program, whether it's Fast Track or major, or if it's something, they do give you the option up to $500,000 if you have an identified emergency. So, if something happened to fail and you had to do something that, you know, you had to replace, you know, some large system in the school, you could address that as an emergency situation. That requires the superintendent and an engineer to sign off to actually certify that it is an emergency situation, and then that would be brought before RIDE under that, under those auspices. They didn't give a real turnaround time for that, but, you know, the, just there is that it'd be weeks, not, you know, months. So, so that effectively kills, your Fast Track only runs from September through the June approval, and if you don't meet those dates, March 15th is the next date, we're not going to meet it because they told us we don't have what we need. So, that effectively kicks everything into the major projects category and will run everything as a major project.
Right. Who from the school committee is going to, or the school department is going to speak to the agenda item on the plan for the use of the fund balance?
This is our plan.
Well, I mean, the first item on the agenda is school committee, school department's plan for use of fund balance, so I'm assuming that one of you is prepared to speak.
Mr. Lindbergh, would you like to do that?
Well, I think I can, but you have the documents that reflect the use of the fund balance, and several documents, so I'm not sure what you're looking for. School committee asked me to put together a plan that had six or seven objectives for the expenditure.
Excuse me, Mr. Lindbergh, would you like speaking at one of the microphones?
Sure.
Would you like to use this one if you'd like? Sit here.
Oh, this is interesting. So, so sure, the, in your packet, the school committee asked for an expenditure plan, and there were six or seven objectives. So, it wasn't necessarily an easy thing to put together, so I put it together. It was pretty clearly delineated, cross-referenced their objectives. From that, they made some decisions. So then, the expenditure plan was revised, and so I think the revision is in your packet. So, that is, what's in front of you? In your packet. Do you want to look at it? Does she have any questions? Or myself or the school committee?
Yeah, it's interesting. You all have opportunity to review it, do you have any questions?
Is that, is that the one that was given to us the last time we all met, we decided this package?
It's funny, it's in, it's in mine, so I don't know what you have, but it stacks out with, you know, it stacks out.
It's kind of, it's kind of an interesting way at this point, because with the information that we got from RIDE, if I'm not mistaken, right, you can't do any of this until 2018 or earlier, with the stage two application. So, it was something that, at that time, when it was drafted, we weren't aware that RIDE was going to impose that new regulation or whatever it is, so.
Yeah, there might be some things on there that don't factor into RIDE. So, I agree with you in regards to the RIDE issues, but in regards to other issues that were on there, technology, RIDE didn't have anything to do with that.
Mr. Lindbergh is going to make some comments, or whatever's on the committees. And I think that discussion can be had.
Can I add one thing to what you had said about the Fast Track major? The basic, the foundation of any project you put forward, whether it's in a Fast Track major, or if you decide to create a capital reserve account and go forward with any other improvements, RIDE won't recognize any of it unless it's in your, in our five-year capital improvement plan. And so, the committee's already voted and approved that. It has not gone into RIDE yet because it has to be re-edited to take out things like the truck or the desks, because they don't deal with that. But, they, they need that, it's our update, the last one was done eight years ago. So, that's really critical that they receive that, and it's really critical that you review it also. So, that really needs to be, that needs to occur rather soon.
Is that going to be for the planning board?
Yeah, it has.
Last week.
Last week.
Dean, do you want to speak to them at all?
Yes, the school, school department came before the planning board, went through their requests.
Dean, you want to grab a mic?
Yeah.
There's an extra one to give to her phone. Paul, just maybe you can just come right here.
The, the school department came before the planning board and went through and explained all of their requests for capital. The planning board asked a number of questions, asked for alternatives, it was a very good meeting and dialogue back and forth, and the planning board, the end result of which, the planning board put a high, a level of high on all of the capital requests that were presented to that, to the board. It has not gone to the budget completely yet, so.
That was my next question.
No, it hasn't.
The, hello, I'd like everybody to have a copy of what we're going to be discussing. What in particular from the list is not something that will be part of the RIDE application?
Take me to my list, let me show you the copy. While your information's coming, I can tell you that RIDE will, RIDE doesn't get involved in the five-year capital plan that we submit with things such as technology.
Okay, and, and you, is, on that sheet, does it say how much is for technology? Maybe it gets a dollar number though?
Yeah, sure, on the revised, on the revised plan, the, to address the present technology education instructional program. That's technology, I'm sorry, educational instructional material. Technology is $63,622, education needs $33,754. None of that will go to RIDE. That's not part of the capital plan. That's great, everybody's got one thing. Almost everybody. The extra from moderator Nato. Want to do something, Dr.? Thank you.
$199, $131.
So, is there anything else in this?
Yeah, $199, you can read it. Sure, let's, let's go down. Great. If your intent is to review it. Shall we do it?
That's on, that's on the agenda.
Sure. So, number two, you can see that one of the, one of the requests from the school committee was to consider how we might defray or absorb some costs and lower the tax impact by addressing the school portion of the 4.3 bond referendum, especially as it relates to health and safety. My recommendation to them was pretty clear that the school committee consider approving at least an RFP for mechanical contractor engineer evaluation report. They would look at the middle school third floor ventilation issue, that was part of the bond project, but in all honesty, I think it would be good to have that further unpacked before it goes any further. So, there's a dollar amount that you pigeonhole that we thought might cover the cost of the RFP, to really pull that apart, because there's been two different approaches to how we might remedy that third floor, and I think actually having an independent voice or a contracted engineer really unpack it, we would have a better idea of the eventual cost. The other directly related bond referendum items are not recommended, as there is no actual approved RIDE plan at this time, so the holy cross, yeah, the high school bond, I got holy cross on my mic, high school bond referendum project estimate, 2.3 million, middle school bond related project, 250,000, both from existing conditions report. You want to see the details, it's on page seven. I'll move to number three, recommend the school committee consider projects related to, sorry, non-bond referendum related, five-year capital improvement plan related to health and safety from year one recommendations. You can go to page eight for those details, they, they came to $199,500. I'll pause for a minute and let you go to page eight for the backup.
Now, just so everybody's clear, Mr. Lindbergh, these are recommendations that you're making from the school committee and not getting voted upon, correct?
I guess, I believe the school committee hasn't voted on them, they have acted on the previous plan.
Right.
They haven't voted on this, they asked me for a plan, and it's, it's a plan.
Right. Well, what was on page, well, it's not a numbered page, but the first page of what had been given out to everybody, those are approved purchases that the school committee has voted upon?
Yes, those were acted upon.
Trying to make sure that everybody understands what we're looking at here.
From the current surplus, but this, this will be not from.
Page one is from this current, actual surplus.
Correct. Right, it's not from past year's surplus. Exactly.
So, just to be clear, it's 44,0942 from this year's school surplus.
Projected surplus, since the year is not yet.
Point in time, yes. If there are no questions on page eight, details on number four on page two, it's summer. Again, I was asked to identify or address health and safety from the five-year capital improvement plan other than year one. So, from the entire capital plan other than year one, what were the identifier of the health and safety issues from the five-year capital improvement plan? And so, we identified detailed, other health and safety related year two through five as $1.3 million. Then we went on, and went on and said, okay, from that, if the school committee's going to consider three projects, I recommend that those be listed. Those would be the handrails on the stairs between the buildings, interior stair railing replacements, and the high, and the NSCS fire alarm system.
Now, that's just a evaluation of.
That's just the, yeah. We have documentation that will tomorrow that reflects, actually, two years ago, three years ago, we recommended expending at least the funds to contract with, because you'd have to contract with a special engineer, I don't know the name, has to be a, some type of fire engineer specialist that would actually come in and design the new fire alarm system, panel wiring, and hogware, and would have, my understanding was, would have to go to the fire marshal, the state fire department for it to be approved. I felt really strongly we should get a leg up on this, because everything that I've received from our electrician, and I've gotten from Simplex, also communication, CSI, I can't remember, communication specialties, as well as Kevin Matthew, who was our electrician in an X-5 fighter, who was to work with our current fire department, looking at the situation. We're just concerned that that, that's on its, clearly it's on its last legs. And so, if we got a leg up and at least expended the funds to contract with the right, do an RFP, contract with the right specialist to come in and actually review, design, finish that, because that will take months, that way it's ready in fact, if you want to go off the bid and get a real cost, because that's going to take some time. And so, if we get at least that partially done, it seems like we're being proactive instead of waiting for the system to actually, you know what. So, that was just trying to get a leg up. I don't even know honestly, attorney Nato, whether that $10,000 is enough to, to actually have a specialist do that. We would have to do an RFP and get that type of bid or quote back. But the concept was, let's get started, because that first step is a huge step. Number five on page three, I really have, I brought this up several times, and was really hoping for some consideration that, that some funds be put aside, just considering some type of committed funds should we have in emergency over at Hallowell, so that it doesn't wipe out our facility department budget. And if we have an emergency, obviously, we'll go back to the school committee or wherever it has to go for approval, but seeing how we may be there a little bit longer, I just really would appreciate some consideration for a backup one. Like I said, if something happens such as a septic system really going completely down, then that would be about, I think, $26,000. So, so we're, we're keeping it up and running, but it would be nice to have a backup. Whether it can be funded differently is up to you. Number six is district LED lighting project, we've been pushing that because we believe there's a good return on that investment. And the last that, that.
I have a question on that, just for the publics. A lot of people wanted to know why this wasn't done with the Johnson Controls.
The LED lighting project?
Yeah, I mean, you know, just as a recommendation, what happened there, and whether this is a new issue, or whether it's an addressed one.
Yeah, it wasn't even part of the discussion back then, which was, I don't know, like four or five years ago. I, I don't know how prominent the LED technology was at that time. Johnson Controls did major work on NSCS in the high school with regard to lighting controls and changing at that time, to change all the walls to the most efficient at that time, and that's what happened, we'll be outreaping the benefits from that, but technology has changed. And I think this is predominantly parking lot, Mr. Shaw's in the audience, but I believe this is parking lot in gym. Johnson Controls, we've been updated our lights in our gym, but technology has changed, and for the better, so that, how was that?
That's fine, actually. So, is this at all of the schools, or just one of the schools?
If we go to page 13, I think it should tell. Whoa! What happened on 13?
It's on 11.
It's on 11?
Well, it's a fun district, the LED lighting, but it doesn't say which schools, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, it should be. Mr. Shaw, can you, is it the parking lots at the high school, middle school, NSCS, and the two gyms?
Yes.
Okay, the gym being the high school and middle school gym?
Yeah, middle school and gym.
Okay. And the, the number seven is the exterior painting, I don't know that RIDE would actually reimburse us for that one.
Sir, print it in.
I don't, yes, sir, sorry.
Thank you. Is there any rebates on that? I actually met in the city of Providence today with a gentleman on that specific issue.
It says right here on the, on the, Mr. Lindbergh, that the total cost is.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine thousand eight thirty-eight, which has been set up for National Grid of $31,459. So, it's, it's, the net number is the only number that's actually being shown here. So, one issue, there's a number that I would hope that he would address, is that when is the payback on National Grid, if you did this this year, will National Grid reimburse you during this fiscal year, or will it reimburse you post-June 30th, so that technically your budget should show a cost of eighty-nine this year, and income of National Grid thirty-one for next year?
So, if it's okay with Mr. Nato, Mr. Shaw actually has had a conversation with National Grid, that he updated me on today, and it is in a precarious situation, because the timeline for this is running out. And so, if it's okay, if Mr. Shaw, Mr. Shaw, you've got to use a mic. Yep. We also have a complete package that was submitted in detail from National Grid savings for over three years.
So, yes, actually, the, okay, thank you. That, this program is going to run out fairly shortly, within, we need to get this done. I don't have my phone on right now, but the email I just got this morning, program is going to run out, and if we go back to him for the same, the same program we have right now, we'll lose, and we would lose close to somewhere between $3,000 and $5,000 worth of rebates if we don't get this going fairly soon. But it would be all expended, everything would be done in this fiscal year.
Including receiving the rebate.
Including rebates, yeah. Do you know the exact date when it will expire? You can let us know if you don't have it on.
And Marty also has, page by page, evaluation of each area that I talked about, parking lots in the gym, with all the history of usage, and, and their reflection of how the rebate would work and the cost in it, so.
Yeah, with the new controls, the new, the new bells and whistles, if you will, that now that the industry has come up with, the payback went from the initial, when my predecessor did it last year, the payback was little, four years, or just about four years, and now with these controls, being able to work it right off my phone or any computer, being able to ratchet things up and down as we need them, the savings drop down to three years, so the pay, the payback, I should say, is a three-year payback now, just, just a tad over three years, where it was over just about, almost four years. So, it's a good time to get it done. Like I said, the program did get, is going to be cut if we don't get it done pretty soon, what kind of grandfather did under, the Fiscally in 2015, so, National Grid.
All right, so, I think that goes through the entire proposal, correct? And these are all items that are not impacted by the RIDE rejection or slowing down on the stage two application. So, do you folks have, on the town council, if it would be appropriate, ask you folks to ask questions or make comments?
Mr. Moderator, you have a question for the school committee chair? Number five is the Hallowell Emergency Contingency Fund of $30,000 for emergencies. I don't know to the extent, but I thought a plan was approved to move children out as the buildings at Hallowell became so deteriorated, or the systems at Hallowell became so deteriorated that we had to move children out. Is it.
We have a contingency plan to move some students. It doesn't cover the entire school, but we do have a plan, I believe it's up to four classrooms, that can move to NSCS. And it prevents that some of the classrooms become uninhabitable. And we are already included, open longer than voters imagine when you build another bond.
Excellent. Yeah, that would, that would be a good example if one of our septic systems, they were pumping out pretty regularly, goes belly up completely. Instead of a direct, we can't repair the septic system, they'll require that bus tie-in, so that's a good example of that septic system, which covers, I think, I'm not sure, at least, at least two buildings, over one, that, that's a good example. I mean, you don't have the budget for it, but just, I feel like, whether we use, whether we use or access existing fund balance to cover that, or whether you set something aside, I just feel like we should acknowledge the fact that we might need some funds for something in the next year or two if something goes belly up, that's all.
Excuse me, so we tend to remember, how many septic systems are there at Hallowell?
All right, from the, off the top of my head, I, I think there are six, four or six.
And there are 12 buildings?
Eleven.
Eleven buildings? Eleven buildings, or 11 in used buildings?
No, they're, they're all in use.
All of them are in use, yep.
Anyone else on the council have questions, or any comments?
On the exterior trim for the high school, to me, that seems like just general house even, which I would think that that would have probably fallen to the RIDE provision some of the things.
Yeah, it's, it's a solid, yeah, it wouldn't, that's what I mentioned, it, it would not be part of any reimbursement, it's an outright, it's an outright expense.
I, I think it's something to seriously consider, though, I mean, as building deteriorates, you know, once it gets to the wood, it's going to start seeping into the structure of buildings, towers, and mold issues.
It has, I know.
I just think that's something we want to address fairly soon.
Mr. Shaw, are you talking about item seven?
Yes.
Isn't that the high school?
High school.
Which one is confusing?
It is, confusing for me, too. Could, could you also take a look at page seven, just so you know the specifics of what I think, just wanted to give you a, a look, you can see on page seven and eight, the items that we, we identified as being a priority when the school committee asked for the number three category, which is other non-bond referendum related five-year capital improvement plans related to health and safety from year one recommendations, so.
We'll allow another question if nobody from the town council has anything at this point. Has there been any consideration, I know. Has there been any consideration, I know there's been talk of school resource officers from the police department in communities all over the state, has there been any consideration by the department or the committee as to whether that would be a use of funds that you'd be looking at now or in the future?
Just, I can only answer from mine. No one's been in touch with me from any board or from any department about that possibility, so.
Could I say something?
Yeah.
It's on our April agenda, Chief Reynolds asked if he could do a presentation, so they will be making a presentation regarding school resource officers to the school committee.
Any other questions on seven and eight? Just so you know, on page eight, number twelve, in our first year recommendation, the whole thirty thousand for the foster and middle school preaching was discussed and was a very, as Mr. Naylor said, was a very fruitful discussion. The whole thirty thousand is in our first year plan. And so what we had talked about with the planning board was, was, I was trying to go a little bit more cost effective, like, let's have it evaluated, but in the end, that evaluation should be part of the thirty thousand. From what I've been told, it definitely needs to be addressed, so I was trying to take baby steps there, but it's probably not appropriate to do it that way. In your high school or place or A B T, we've got a long way to go there. That's just a baby step in terms of what they did.
Could you explain to people what A B T is?
Sure.
And B C T, while you're at it, please.
I'm sorry. So it's, Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, it's asbestos vinyl tile. In other words, there is squares, tile in the building. I think that maybe it was asbestos versus B C T, which is vinyl composite tile. And so we, we really want to begin, we need to, you know, begin addressing that throughout the whole school. So that was a baby step. I'll go back to my seat unless there are any other questions.
I mean, you may want to be up here at this whole school.
Excuse me, which, which, which schools are those tiles located in? High school, high school?
Mr. Nato, if I may, if you go to Jason's plan, they include everything that Mr. Lindberg went over. So I think if we go through Jason's plan, it's all comprehensive. It might be a better use of our time to go through, here's what the entire nut is, and here's how we do it, instead of kind of looking at this and then looking at that. I'm just giving you, it's, the same items are in Jason's plan.
Well, I'll keep Jason's presentation a little shorter then. I did want to have the town council understand what the items were that were being requested by the department of the committee. So I appreciate your, your recommendation, Mr. Naylor, but kind of too late, we already talked about them.
Well, not really. It's on page ten. See? Page ten, you'll see they're not highlighted. They're not highlighted. So these things aren't part, I believe, of the one, the one ninety-nine, but I, they are in the plan other than year one. So I guess, am I good?
You're good, yeah. Stick around a little.
Thank you for your honesty.
Got to be talking those technologies, so you didn't want to talk. No other questions or comments from the school, or from the town council? Anybody on the school committee have anything they want to ask or offer at this point? Yes?
We want to make a motion for it.
That's not on the, I, I don't actually have your agenda. My understanding was that you were going to consider these items at another meeting, not tonight.
Mr. Moderator, this discussion by council votes are reactions to the question.
Well, that's, that's the, that's your agenda for the town council. I don't have the school committee agenda. And I don't know if they are prepared, if they want to make their motions tonight or if they're going to do that at another meeting. I have any input on that?
It is on our agenda, number nine.
I would prefer to move forward, though, without having meetings. If you're welcome, if you've got your meeting going, and the joint meeting is over, if it's over, you've still got other items to discuss, you can go back on your agenda, whatever you want.
Right, but shouldn't we approve a plan and make sure the council approves the plan? I'm not saying the spending part of it is the actual plan.
The town council really doesn't have any right to approve your spending plan. They have the right to approve dollars.
We agree with you, but they disagree with you.
But I'm right.
But just for, just to see what they, they are going to do, so.
So if, if I may.
I'm going to get you, Michael. I haven't, I was going to also ask Mr. Naylor and the budget folks to say.
So as, if I may, Rick, jump in just with one piece of information that I probably, I don't know, just going a little bit earlier, I probably didn't think to mention. So one of the other things that RIDE has suggested to the school is, normally when you do a project, whether that's eligible for reimbursement, now I know we're considering things that are and are not, but this is something for, for the town council and we would need your input on this and we would need a little on this. So RIDE has a program whereby you set up a direct funding account. It's, it's a capital reserve account that is exclusively just for taking care of items that are on your five-year capital. So it, it doesn't, it doesn't really distinguish between whether they're reimbursable or not reimbursable. It's just to do those, those projects that are submitted as part of your five-year plan. The benefit to this dedicated fund is, is that you get direct reimbursement back. Now, the way that a project normally runs is, is you complete the project, RIDE provides the thirty-four percent reimbursement, and then you, the town receives that back. So that money would go back into the general fund, the town council would then control that, those funds. You get that reimbursement at the end of the project. The revolving capital fund would be a special account set up just to address these, these items. And they would still have to go through the regular fast track or, or emergency stages, however you address that part, part of it with RIDE, but you could actually receive monthly reimbursement back. The key to that, and the part that RIDE insists on, is that that reimbursement go back into the school funds. So what it requires in order to, in order to set up a capital reserve account is that the town council authorize the establishment of the account and that you're all right with direct submission and direct reimbursement back through the school. Because it would, it would then not go back into the general fund, it would go back into that dedicated account to be used for other projects. The benefit there is, is that you get that money back quicker, it's a quicker turnaround on your expenses, and you can, you know, conceivably, instead of, you know, thirty-five cents for every dollar, you're really spending, you're stretching that because it's now come back into your account. So now you're spending reimbursement money that you already have back to continue projects. So you're really getting a one point five or so spend. So that is something that you could take action on tonight. I, we have not had a formal discussion, I don't believe. If there's an amount, a final amount that we would like to fund it, I think we all believe it's a good idea, but I don't know what that final funding amount is or where that level might sense. That really is part of something that we need to figure out going forward, but notwithstanding the funding, we could set up the account. You know, we could get authorization from the town council to set up that account, and we could start the account and then discuss funding later if we wanted to. That funding could come from any number of sources, though. It could come directly from the town council, it could come from the, the school committee, from funds that we either have in the, I know it's not a real word, but possible surplus, proposed surplus, whatever you want.
Projected.
Projected, yeah. Or it could come from the fund balance if we decided to do that, so. You want to say a few more details, give us some clues?
Well, I think I did, it was only up to five hundred thousand.
No, 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 so, so.
Per year.
No, so, so the five hundred thousand limit is for emergency repairs. So that has nothing to do with the, the fund. There is no limit to how much you can put in this capital reserve fund that I'm aware of. I haven't, I don't think anyone's thought to ask the question. I think we need more discussion around what that funding level is, how much we, we put in there. I don't know if, you know, if it all comes from, from the school side, if the town's willing to, you know, match, you know, let's say we do a dollar for dollar match, we take some from the fund balance, you know, some from the general fund and, and put it in there just to address capital issues. So it would only be for capital improvement, though, if you dedicate it.
I think what I would suggest, Mr. Bassett, is that the committee get better and more information about that and then make a request to the council, because at this point, you don't know all the facts, as you admit, and it's hard to ask the council to vote on something when it's unclear as to what the parameters are of the program. So I consult a briefly solicitor, and he agrees that it would be better if you came back with a hard recommendation that the council can consider.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you?
Absolutely.
Also, can you, can you ask a question? Uh, Mr. Bassett?
Yeah.
Could you also find out if, if there's a maximum reimbursable amount on that? So even though there may not be a limit to the amount we can have in that fund or spend, is there a maximum that will reimburse us?
Mr. Bassett, with your approval, can I just?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so, Mrs. Soli, just real quickly, the, the capital reserve account, no matter what, oh, thank you, Rick, sorry. I was following.
I did.
The capital, the capital.
You did that.
I did. The capital reserve account, and I pretty much nailed it. It, it really is a wonderful mechanism, and I completely agree. We'll package all the information, get it back to you, there's great information on it. And that's right, hypothetically, if you put in, if you collaborated and put in eight hundred or a million dollars, you split it both ways, you're able to do a million and six worth of projects over five years. Because your reimbursement, unlike bonded funds, are going to come back quicker. The other key to it is that, what I learned, is that you want to package your projects around in two hundred thousand dollar increments, and you want to target things like ADA, health and safety, asbestos, because you can increase your thirty-five percent reimbursement to potentially thirty-nine. But the, the max typically for a district like us is thirty-five percent reimbursement. But they have incentives for thirty-nine, and it's the way you package your projects.
So if I, if I understood, if we're saying correctly, and I'm not at this that much, but in other words, one of those projects that we're removing the asbestos tiles could be, could be reimbursed for it because of what we're doing?
Yeah, what, what I was told is, is, again, my notes reflect a meeting with Mr. De Sylva, that something like that, so he would help us package those projects to get the maximum. So typically, for most, it would be thirty-five percent, but he highlighted asbestos and other health and safety issues that, if they're packaged correctly, in the two hundred thousand dollar increment, your reimbursement comes back in a matter of months, not years. Right, Eric?
Yes. So you don't have to wait for the end of the project, is, is the key, is you submit during the project for that reimbursement.
Not too difficult, though, Mike.
So I'll, I'll clarify whether, I think what you're asking, Mike, is, I'll clarify whether strict, just strictly removing asbestos, if that qualifies for health and safety alone, because you may or may not be refurbishing. You're, you're addressing something that we all know is, is an issue with the age of the school, so.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll add that in. I'm, I'm taking notes now and I'll add that all in, so we'll go back to RIDE.
I know I pulled up a lot of things together for Mr. Erickson and you.
Yeah.
Various reports, that one particular one about funding and reimbursement, I thought was excellent. So I think a lot of that information we can pull together from the council.
So even the, what about the, could we also inquire?
Yeah, rather than focus on individual items in this plan right now.
Okay.
Let's, let's continue with the agenda, and I think we've talked about the use of the fund balance enough. There's no action that I think we have taken tonight. Mr. Bouchek?
Excuse me, you, Mr. Moderator, is that, my concern is that, I understand how, how this account is going to work, but I'm just trying to get a handle, is that, because planning, the planning usually, the planning board normally approves various capital improvements, also the budget committee gets involved with it, and also, too, with our finance director as well for these projects, so I think, you know, it would be important that we all get this information and see how this is all going to affect the, the overall, the town, town situation as well as the school situation.
There's clearly work that needs to be done, and the school committee is going to come back to you with, with a better description of the program. And it sounds like they're already proceeding through the required phase. They've gone to planning board. They will be going to budget, so I think all that will be addressed, unless you're telling me that that's not the plan, but it sounds to be like that's the plan, so I think those charter requirements will, are planned to be met.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Erickson?
My only question would be whether you need a local ordinance to match the state, because approval by one town council may not be effective after that town council leaves. In Lincoln, we have a, a system that is very similar to that that was done before, and I think that they will wind up modifying their existing ordinance. And that indicates to me that we probably need an ordinance, a matching ordinance at the local level for the long term.
Well, thankfully, that's no longer my job. Mrs. Faracy, Mr. Rapo, anybody from budget, have any questions or comments on this first item on the agenda?
Mike Rapo from the budget committee. We did review the, the capital spending last night. A lot of the issues on the capital came from issues that were repeated last year. The items on this year's list are high priority, but last year, they were low and medium. So we have, the budget committee has to do some work to figure out why did they change from low and medium to high as a priority in one year? So we'll continue with that process. When I looked at the summary tonight, if you go to page three and you look at the, the summary of the five hundred eighty-five thousand, it's not going to leave a lot of money if you want to use any of that money for the bond. That's an issue that, I guess, we discussed at the budget committee, gave a recommendation to the council to send a letter to the school committee to ask if the school committee would be willing to set aside funds. I think the amount would have been one million dollars. But we want at least to set something aside from the existing fund balance that could be used to assist the bond, either to lower the bond or if we ran into an issue, we had to build additional classrooms, not to go out to a second bond if we needed an extra five or six hundred thousand dollars. We could use the, the fund balance if something went wrong with having to expend more money to build additional classrooms. But if we follow this process, that three hundred thirty-five thousand dollar balance is not going to be enough money to really make an impact on, on the bond, unless the council wants to change its position and say, we don't want to use any of the fund balance or recommend it to the school committee. We'd like to work with you to use some of it. If you change your opinion, then this three hundred thirty-five thousand is okay. But from the budget committee, we would still like to see a higher number in reserve if you had to use some of that for the bond payment. If you notice on the other pages, let's see, page, page seven, last year, the tile replacement was a painting. They were going to paint some of the tiles. We did a walkthrough. I don't know if it's mostly a health and safety issue or is it a cosmetic issue on the ceiling tiles? There are tiles that need to be replaced. That's not an issue. The question is whether you want to phase in seventy thousand dollars worth of tile replacement at this time, unless you want to focus on more important issues for health and safety and use the seventy thousand for something else. The cameras at the bottom of page seven, that came up last year. The cameras are not being monitored on a live time process, so last year, when it came before the budget committee, we did not approve purchasing more cameras, because we're not looking at the tapes on the council basis. So why spend more hardware if you're not using the equipment? If we were going to review it online to see if there was an accident and you were going to take action, I would say, yeah, you buy the cameras. But if no one's going to look at the cameras, I mean, why are we buying more cameras? That came up last year, because we checked it last year.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Rappo? Wouldn't you only need to look at the cameras if something had happened?
Correct.
And then you'd have?
Well, it's a historical, it's a historical document.
But it's still, that's how most security systems work. People are sitting there watching video footage of nothing happening. You have the system in place so that you can check it if something is happening, if a car is vandalized, if a student is assaulted, you have the video record to go back to and look at it, but...
But last year, when it was brought up as an issue, one of the reasons was, is a preventative, to prevent things from happening.
That's another, that's another use of the security system.
But they don't look at the cameras.
And like I said, most security systems, nobody looks at it unless there's an issue. So.
But just for, just for your information, it was rejected last year, and it wasn't a, it wasn't a high priority.
Mr. Rappo, the slide ten and eleven on page seven, or just eleven?
It's ten, uh, ten and eleven, both of them. On the fire alarm systems on page nine, has it been verified that we cannot order replacement parts for that alarm system? That question did come up. I mean, if you can't order parts, I agree that we should stop the investment, doing an engineering study to get a replacement system, if you cannot order replacement parts. So have we verified that replacement parts are not available on this alarm system?
We have yet to receive the information that we requested before, which I believe is forthcoming, but we have yet to receive the information that we requested before the system that is in place, to know if we can get replacement parts or not.
So we still don't have an answer to that?
We don't have an answer.
That's actually coming tomorrow, I believe.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
And I think a lot, we had a discussion yesterday, a lot of the items probably should have been fixed when we did the energy bond, a lot of the removal of equipment and backflow, a lot of these things, we just ran out of money, so they should have been done years ago, so they've got to be done, so there's no disagreement about not doing them. It's just that unfortunately, with the energy bond that we floated when we ran out of money, they couldn't remove a lot of the old hot water tanks or the backflow, so a lot of the things were left off because of budget constraints. So now we're, we're in a position happy at this time. If anyone has any questions?
Mr. Lindberg, did you want to comment?
Sure, thanks.
Get to your next one.
Sure. Just real quickly, just in order to correct some, either in your opinion or facts, there was nothing left off, the energy bond, because it wasn't affordable. The energy bond was very specific to facility improvement measures from which you would gain a benefit and a cost savings. One of the things that was dramatically left off were the windows at the, at the high school, on purpose, because if anybody really studied the financial energy audit, grade audit, you would clearly see that the return on that investment wasn't high enough for us to include. There was no such thing as backflow preventers ever considered, there was no such thing as a removal of a hot water tank ever considered. So I just, let's just put that in perspective, the energy bond didn't run out of money, and if you really want to take a look at the financial grade energy audit, you can see other items or conservation projects, energy conservation projects, that were considered, but the return on that wasn't high enough for that group at that time to say, let's include it. I'm just going to make a comment about the security cameras. Absolutely no one sits at their desk and watches cameras all day. Mr. Shaw has access to quite a few cameras, and at times he'll have all the cameras up on his. But Mr. Naylor's correct. You look at them when there's an issue, and we have a record of it. We can look at them from the night before and clearly see that was vandalism done in the back of the high school, when there was vandalism. You need security cameras operating so that you can see who's at your entrances during the day, and who wants to get in. So, and in terms of the issues that were high, medium, and low last year, and not this year, I think we need to look at this logically. It's a plan. Whatever was funded last year, that changes the whole outlook of your plan this year. Whatever wasn't funded last year, changes your outlook of your plan this year. We didn't come forward and, and designate them as high, medium, low. Somebody else did. And so we bring forward our year one recommendations through year five. So I just think we need to put that in perspective. So you have a pretty comprehensive plan this year, I think it's the best ever. And yes, last year, there were a number of things that we considered high. There were very minimal that were funded, and that's, we all get that, money's, money's tight. And so I'll just leave it at that, but I just wanted to correct those facts, so.
Erickson?
I just wanted to reiterate that when we considered LED, it wasn't cost effective, and it's come a long way in the past seven years, particularly in the twenty-seven hundred to four thousand degree Kelvin white light. So I, I went through that with Mr. Lindberg and our, we had an excellent engineer who critiqued what Johnson Controls did, and there's no question that we got the most bang from the buck out of what we did. That was all paid back as savings.
If the council has no further questions with respect to the fund balance, I suggest we move on to the funding of the technology purchase, which is the next item on your agenda. Who's going to speak to that from the school committee? For the department itself. Mr. Lindberg, you want somebody to speak on the funding of the technology?
Sure. Adam Stanley's here tonight, and I really believe that, I'll turn it over to him, but I think you would have a more meaningful discussion if you actually had the five-year hardware, hardware and firmware plan that he's developed, that the committee has, and it's in the budget. I think it would really be an eye-opener for you, but I'll turn it over to Adam, if you have any questions.
Hey, let's keep it really brief. Last year, we submitted a capital plan for technology purchases. Of that, it was desktop replacements for a high school, which is probably the highest priority that we're receiving to replace. Replacement desktops for Howlwell staff, which are also these, and we also requested additional firmware parts, and we've been blessed this year with many firmware parts. So that's probably the least of our needs right now, but still, there's still a very high need for replacement desktops for the high school and replacement rotations for Howlwell. So if there's any questions regarding that? Yes.
Technology desktop P C's, fourteen thousand, does that cover the desktops for the high school and for Howlwell?
Uh, just for Howlwell.
Fourteen thousand just for Howlwell?
Yes.
How many desktop P Cs are you talking about?
Um, well, that was generated about a year ago, so, I mean, but you can probably factor in about a lit, anywhere from ten to fifteen desktops in that range.
Do you have a shot of Walmart?
We primarily go through Dell, which I'm a state district, but Walmart, Walmart's cool.
Do we have a number for the desktops at the night school?
Yeah, we're seeking thirty, replacement hardware.
For computer libraries for the students? And again, you're looking at Dell?
Correct.
If I may, off to my question a little bit. Jason, when we did the police department, did we use H P or did we use Dell?
Dell was actually cheaper for the P C. The police requested we go with H P because it was the vendor that they wanted to use. After tweaking the specs, I believe that we still went with the Dell because it was cheaper.
Do you remember what the top unit had priced for a desktop?
I'd have to guess in the thousand range, so I can't tell you exactly. So the ten to fifteen for fourteen thousand seems fair to me. I think we purchased nineteen desktops for seventeen K or something, it was something like that, about a dollar a few. I have the fully info, I won't be exact.
Later. Thank you.
Yes.
Oh. Mrs. Naylor?
I also think that this item is on the agenda because the council had removed the purchase in the amount of sixty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars that was previously approved in the capital budget because of the maintenance and other issues that are involved. So we're still waiting for your decision as to whether or not you're going to go ahead and fund that purchase, which has already been made. I don't know if your planning may have...